We'll call the regular scheduled Bolivar City Council meeting to order, the regular scheduled Monday meeting for January. I want to welcome all of our citizens and visitors. Thanks for being here and thank you for joining us via our social media accounts. And we'll start with our normal fashion with our prayer and pledge. I'll ask Mr. Crawford if he would lead us in prayer and followed by the pledge.
Father, we thank you for today and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us, Father. And Father, we thank you for this great country in which we live. And Father, we ask you to just protect the ones that are protecting us, Father. Whether they're here or overseas, Father, we just ask you to watch after them, Father. And Father, we thank you for the city and what it does, Father, and we just ask that you would be with us as we make decisions for the citizens of this town, Father. And Father, we just ask you to be with those that have been involved in the bad weather that's hit a lot of areas of our country, Father. Father, just be with them and their families for the loss of lives and loved ones, Father. Just lift them up. And Father, we ask these things in your name and ask you to forgive us for our standing shortcomings. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would, call the roll, Ms. Clerk. Mr. Wally did inform us earlier about a month ago that he was gonna be out today. He was out of town for work, so he wasn't able to join us at the council meeting tonight. We have one set of meeting minutes to approve our last meeting in December. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion that we approve those minutes? Motion on the second. If you would, cast your votes. Motion carried. Under my report, first I would like for all of our citizens to be in prayer for family members that have lost loved ones. Here's the first of the year. We've had a lot of deaths that has affected our community, business owners here and friends and families. So we asking you guys just to keep those families in your prayers. As well as our miss, the family, Bun family of one of our officers that passed on the first of the year. I want to thank the Bolivar Police Department. They did a great job at the funeral services for Ms. Runda. So thank her for her service and she will be missed by the department. So if you would, continue to keep her and keep her family in your prayers. Also want to thank the Tennessee Highway Patrol as well as the Hardeman County Sheriff's Department. They covered the city while our guys was able to go to the funeral. I think we had about twenty officers there at the funeral. So they covered the city while we attended those services. So I want to thank the Tennessee Highway Patrol and if you guys see the sheriff, if you would, thank him on behalf of the city for providing coverage for our city while they were out of town. The officers here at City Hall will be closed on MLK Day and observation for Martin Luther King Day. So the administrative officers will be closed. The Martin Luther King Parade will be January the eighteenth. Everybody is welcome to attend and that will be at 2:00 PM, January the eighteenth. And also Councilman Joel will be sponsoring the Martin Luther King Day program January the twentieth at twelve thirty at the Mount Salem Church in Hickory Valley. So if you guys would like to attend that, that will be on the twentieth at two PM. I'm sorry, on the twentieth at twelve thirty. And concluding my report, we have a special guest here today. Our state representative, Mr. Johnny Shaw is here and he's coming and I'll ask him to join us tonight and do a legislative update as the guys get ready to go back into session. I want to thank him for his service and his representation of our city and county. So at this time, Mr. Shaw, we'll let you have the floor. It feels special to have you in our presence tonight. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Hi, it's a good thing. Thank you. It's certainly, it's an honor to be here. I greet you and all of the all of the council members tonight. I wanted to just come by first of all to say thank you all for what you do. Being in state government, I realize that you all are right in the trenches every day. And without you all, we would not be successful in Nashville. And I know that can be turned the other way, but thank you so much. And what my plans are this year is to try to visit more local government meetings if I possibly can because what we want to do, we want to be passive legislation and work on legislation that you all want us to work on. And I wanted to come by just to find out maybe if there was any particular pieces of legislation that you all might be interested in already or perhaps something you'd like for us to think about carrying on your behalf or looking at anything for you as we close out this one hundred and eleventh General Assembly. I will say off schedule for a moment, y'all are really hot tech. When you said cast the votes, it's always there to say, ah, you guys punch buttons and things go on the screen. I gotta tell you, in there, if we behind, we gotta catch up here.
They punch buttons too.
But only a couple of things. I know you all already know about the driver's license and getting the star. That's already out there on the driver's license. Law has already passed and I know you'll be encouraging your citizens over the next few months between now and October. Those who want to make sure that they get that star or don't have passports, get the license changed. Couple of the things I think that's going to be interesting this year. I got legislation in to provide or asking the state to offer pre-K for all those who could qualify across the state of Tennessee. We think it's important to catch people when they are young.
Yeah.
I think we have invested millions and millions of dollars in education. That's kind of fallen by the wayside because we wait till kids get to the point where they can't read and give them a scholarship. And I don't think that is of any value. So what I'd like to see us offer pre-K, statewide pre-K, free pre-K and provide transportation if needed. Because I think if you catch a child at two or three years old, you can help that child much better than you can
Yeah.
at ten, twelve, thirteen years old. That's gonna cost a lot of money. I don't know how successful that'll be. I've worked with a lot of conservative people who just might put the hammer down right away and say, we can't do it, but we gonna certainly try for sure. I'm gonna also be looking closely at what's going on with the mega site. And I know that's not in Hardeman County, but we have put so many millions of dollars in that piece of property. And our governor, who I love, I think he's a great guy, but he's not on our cheerleading team yet. The construction work is going on, but he's not saying a lot about it. And I think that could be a lot of reasons. I'm speculating. I wouldn't want this to get too far gone. And I know we streamed, but if the mega site become a success, it's gonna change the way people do business in industry in Hardeman, Haywood, Fayette County around, especially the wage issue. If we get a company to come in and pay twenty, twenty-two dollars, twenty-five dollars an hour, people who are working though are gonna change from where they are and go to that work. And that I understand, but that's good competition. We need that. But I think that may be one of the reasons why people are getting quiet about it because local industries may not be able to step up to that challenge of paying that kind of money for one hour wages. So I'm just saying I'm a little bit concerned right now about where we are with the mega site. Construction is going on, but nobody's talking about what we're gonna do. So that's something I will be working on. And we also will have a challenge this year of addressing the cost of healthcare. I don't know, and I'll be the first to say, I don't know how the, how the, the, the way the system is set up and how the grants are gonna work. Might work well. I have not been able to have, sit out with anybody that could give you some inside information on how that's gonna really work. So I'm really concerned. And as soon as I know, I'll let you all know because we starting at noon tomorrow. We should find out pretty soon about that. We're gonna be addressing a lot of rural issues, broadband. As a matter of fact, I talked to, and I, Lord, I'm ashamed, I can't ever think of his name. I didn't follow him.
Tony Kirk.
Tony Kirk this evening. I spoke with him for a moment. I know he's interested, but it's costly. But it's a tool that we've got to have.
Yeah.
if we're gonna succeed. The farmers and businesses, schools and everybody, kids who in school, living in rural areas gonna have broadband. So that's gonna be an issue that we're gonna, and I know state is already offering some relief for the broadband issue now and hopefully we can get much more out of that. That is gonna be a big issue as well as our rural health issue. And also this year, census taken is gonna be a big issue. And that's gonna affect us locally as well as at the state level. So I encourage you all, to encourage you all's constituents to please give the name, address and all the information because the federal dollars are gonna come based upon numbers. And we already short on numbers in rural areas now as it is. So the more vote we can get, more money we can get. To know what's gonna happen in the final phase of the one hundred and eleventh General Assembly, if I really knew, I wouldn't be here tonight. It's no telling what's gonna come up, but those just, just a few things that might, I'm sure, will be up and we'll be discussing along with some other issues. But I will tell you in my closing that we all have to run for reelection next year in the House, so we won't be that long. I predict that April fifteenth, we'll probably be coming home. And what I finally want to say is to all of the council members, all of you as well as you, my office is always open to you all. Any day of the week, seven days a week, call us. If it's legislation you think we need to support, just let us know. Because I'm there to represent you all. I'm there to represent the state of Tennessee, but I'm also there to represent you all. So just know when you come to Nashville, my office is there for y'all to stop in, the phone calls, if you need to, or to sit around, rest yourself, rest your coat, your caps, whatever. Chat with Allison because I probably won't be in there. But just know the office is open for you all. And my number for anybody who wants to take it down is six one five seven four one four five three eight. And when you call, you can get the email address, so I don't mess it up.
Anybody got any questions or anything?
I do. Representative Shaw, could you elaborate on the new law that passed in regards to the handgun permit for those that's not familiar with that?
Yes, sir. You can now apply online, go online and, and get your handgun permit now. It takes about ninety seconds, I think, online. But you do have to have the background check. Gotta have a background check. But once you get the background check, you don't have to go to school. You don't have to go to target practice anymore. I really would need to go because I can't hit anything. Had Armadillo in my yard as close as you are and I missed him nine times, so I.
We need to take your gun, I think.
You got the wrong kind of gun, bro.
But it's pretty simple now. It's, it's, and I don't know if that's changed anything other than people being experienced on using firearms. And most people that get handguns even when they go through the old process, to take the test, to go through it and to say what you will or will not do is one thing. But you being a former trooper, you know that moment. It's not many people who have firearms who really know what to do when that moment comes. Nobody can really say for the most part, they say what they think they will do. But what they will do, it's totally something different. I just wish people would be responsible. We need guns. We need guns. I don't, I don't, I'm not serving out against us having guns, but we do need to be a little more responsible with firearms. And we don't need to flunk them around. They're not to be flunked around to say, I got a firearm. Because we got a chief of police and he has officers to do that. But if we could just get responsible people and put them up and make sure the kids don't get hands on them and use them wisely and care them only for protection when needed be, I'm all in favor. I'll answer your question.
Yeah, you did. I appreciate that. I know it just made it much simpler for the citizen to get a weapon. And we do appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
I'll just say thank you so much, Mr. I'm sorry, did you have a question? Thank you so much, Mr. Shaw. We, you do a good job. Every time I go up there, he has a lot of respect in Nashville. So thank you for your service and representing us and representing us well. And he'll take you out to lunch too, if you get him on the right path. He missed that part.
I should say the mayor is very high respected in Nashville too. He's made a lot of enrolls and everybody knowing and everybody likes him a whole lot. And our governor really likes him. I don't know what it is about him, the governor, but our governor really likes him. He asks me about it all the time. Always give you a back breath when he asks.
I do the same about you. So it's like, thank you, Mr. Shaw. All right, starting on our committee reports on the Bolivar Energy Council Report. The BEA Board met in general session December thirtieth. The following items were approved by the board. The use of an auction company to sell online trucks, BEA Economic Development Fund Policy, the BEA Non-Disclosure Agreement, and BEA will be closed on January twentieth for MLK Day. Concludes the report for the Lecture Department. Lecture Department, next, utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Along with the citizens who were matched last Wednesday, we had a few issues, well, not issues, but a couple of things we could go over. First, we had Ms. Laura Hall, the director of the chamber. She came in and told us about her work plan up there off of the economic development money that the utility board had basically given her in the chamber to help them with their work. And Mr. Robert Stigall, our engineer, will be here this Thursday. We want to start our CDVG grant project. He is coming in with some plans and we're gonna get together and try to figure out which direction we're going. And we should have the plans finished in a couple of weeks and then we'll be ready for the bid package to come out. And really looking forward to getting that started. We got a lot of money to spend thanks to the state. It's Shaw. And we have a property conservation action grant that was issued to us by B Partners. That's gonna be installing security cameras at our water treatment plant. This is gonna be beneficial not only to us, but also the state. They won't keep eyes on that place over there. We're kind of open in the front, so we'll be watching all angles of the plant. And we're looking forward to getting that up and running. I think that'll probably be installed in the next couple of weeks. And the other thing I got is the gas prices are remaining at sixty-five cents this month, which is very unusual in January.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Next, we have Fire Chief Liam Price.
Good evening, everybody. Many years you guys I haven't seen this year.
All right.
My report is fire calls. We had twenty-one fire calls, sixteen in city, five in county. We had no injuries, had training hours, two seventy mornings, smoke alarm installed, seventeen street lanes, infection was sixteen. And that's my report. Also want to give some thanks out to police and fire commission, Miss Flavio Ken, coming out, having an angry toy drive in one December, and also Ms. Suzanne Ray, who coming out, having with the lineup and doing great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief Jones, Police Department.
Good evening. We had six hundred and twenty-five house were serviced, one hundred and sixty-three citations. We had fourteen accidents. Out of those accidents, two were injuries, the twelve were partying jobs. We had twenty-two arrests, one was a juvenile and twenty-one adults. For special events, we had which was the Christmas parade that we had to work. We done one D U R saturations and we've had officers receiving individual awards. Officer Munoz received seat bed award to the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. And also Officer Rupson received a child safety award. But the one that I'm most proud of is the MAD award. It's for most outstanding police department in West Tennessee. And we received that from MAD, which we didn't get to go to the dinner. And that's the one I'm most proud of. It combines the enforcement we've done and also the educational programs we've done. So that's the award that I'm proud of out of all of them. So that's my report.
Let me say something here, Mayor. Chief, I know you took my little thunder away, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it anyway. Because Mayor McTinsley and myself, and I went to the, I called it homegoing of Officer Bun. And I would have to say that the Bolivar Police Department officers came in numbers. And I want to say unity in the police department. I have to say that it was outstanding. The honor guard done an outstanding job. I mean, I'm quite sure that Officer Bun would've been proud of the Bolivar Police Department as I am. So I did wanted to, I think I said something to the police, each police department Saturday. So I just wanted to make it known in public that we should be proud of our police department for the outstanding job. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, Parks and Recs, Parks and Recs, Curtis Stack.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Good evening.
We have the full schedule of basketball league with thirty-five and up, Friday night, co-ed U sixty-eight and nine, ten-year-olds. Also, we continue with our Bill Kibball and Rokes classes. We continue to work at Sand Beach Lake and are renovating the Hatch River Park sign. Talked to, the mayor talked to Mr. Gerald Parrish and informed us that we should be receiving our LPR RM grant contract soon. Also, we're registering for eleven through fourteen co-ed basketball also.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. I'll just to go in and look it up when Mr. Curtis talked about on the LPRF. Now, that's the grant for the Hatch River Park. We've been waiting a while before we got started. We, it's not us. We're waiting on the contract from the state. And I talked with Representative Shaw and we had a good Southwest Development Legislative Launching and talked about processes and grant funding and taking as long as they're taking on contracts and stuff like that. So we should be getting it soon. As soon as we get the contract, we'll bring that to the council to approve those plans to move forward on that.
Good job.
And also, if you, if you get the opportunity, go by the, one of the games on Saturday morning, you can see the Junior Grizzlies. They've officially started and they love the uniforms. I know my little boys, they, they think they're in the NBA. So go by there and look at the guys in the uniform. They look, looks real good over there. Streets and sanitation, Mr. Ed Van Derwee got sick right towards the end of the day and he went and got a cocktail shot. So he wasn't able to make it. So I'm happy he stayed away. We didn't want any of that. But you can see his report. Planning, Mr. Golda.
The planning committee did not meet last month and maybe next month we have something going on.
Okay, next, Library, Ms. Becky. Ms. Becky, what?
For the month of December, we took in one thousand forty-seven dollars from the DUCM donation to help the foundation. We had six programs with one hundred and seventy participants. My total circulation for the month for materials was one thousand two hundred and twenty-three, three hundred eighty-two computer users, three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight Wi-Fi users, and we had four hundred and sixty-seven using our radios.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Ms. Peggy is out sick as well. You have her report there from the senior citizens. Historic's Honor Commissioner, Ms. Ray.
Historic's only did not meet in December.
Mr. Watkins, he made it. Okay, he, Mr. Watkins, code.
You should have a copy of the building consultation, five, the permit check, zero, building inspection, school, public inspection, seventeen, mechanical, seventeen, person message issue twelve, and we did issue a certificate of occupancy, the big A, the mail, open mail. We'll also report to you that the whole grant that we've been going for every single year is still in progress. We've done fifty percent inspection on the first house. I'm told it should be ready for final inspection, hopefully by the end of this week. And the second house should be ready for fifty percent inspection sometime this week or next. And I think we're in the process of taking bids on the next.
Yeah, uh-huh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. And we'll have a.
We're still working on Margon Street, right?
We are.
Okay. And the four, one, the other one, I forgot the name. Okay. Well, we, all right.
We'll have a slum hearing immediately after the council meet, well, after the board meet. The Devco Board will be meeting the twenty-seventh of this month at five, the twenty-seventh of this month at five PM will be the Devco meeting. And I, the Main Street report, we'll have a report for their meeting from last month at the next council meeting. But I would like to, yes, sir. You have a question. I would like to commend the Main Street on the good job of the parade. We had a real good Christmas parade. Commend them on a job well done on that. So go ahead, Mr. McKinnon.
No, I just wanted to, on the street in sanitation department, just to say that January is buck item. I didn't want to go through the whole report, but I do want to let the citizens know that January is buck item pickup month. So if you have any items that you need to put on the side of the road, other than tires or whatever you're supposed to hire.
No tires, no freon, no demolition.
I just want to make sure that citizens are aware of that since we on television. That's all I want. Thank you.
Did I leave in, that was all of it, Ricky? No tires, no freon, and no demolition materials. Got no old business. Under new business, we have discussed a lease agreement between City of Bolivar and Hardeman County Democratic Party. What we have, if you guys are aware, the Democratic Party was leasing out the old Chamber Building that's owned by the city. And we have a letter we received from Ms. Rice on the summer of the eleventh. I'll just read this to you. I'm pretty sure you guys have already had it, but had the opportunity to read it. But says, Honorable Julian Tizik and City Councilman, City of Bolivar, dear ladies and gentlemen, let this letter serve as notice that the Hardeman County Democratic Party Executive Committee, by majority of vote, wishes to terminate the lease on the old Chamber Building on Market Street sixty days from this date, from the date of this letter. In meantime, with freezing weather upon us, we're asking that the city rent, winterize the building to keep pipes from freezing. Matt Carter was to have all utilities turned off on December tenth, twenty nineteen. Sincerely, Mayor Rice, Secretary, Hardeman County Democratic Party. So basically, we're just ending that lease. I don't, there was no money exchanged or anything like that. They just wanted to close that lease out. And if anybody didn't have any objections to it, I was gonna go ahead and let them turn off utilities and get everything turned off and closed out of that name. And we could, the city, we can just go and winterize it. Any objection? Okay. Mr. Maroney, we don't, do we need that in a vote or just, just accept this letter?
You don't have to have a vote because the lease provides that if they, since you noticed as they've done, if they can terminate the lease, it doesn't require your vote to make it a bid.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll send official notice to them that we'll clear all that out on that, that building there. Next, we have the discussion of providing additional trash cans for residents and the cost. I think we, I may have mentioned this last month. I don't know for sure. But I, we've been talking about this and meeting about it. I talked with Councilman Wally about it as well as Mr. Van Derwee over all this. And basically, what we're looking at doing is the cost is what we put down here was a one-time fee, additional fee for twenty-five dollars for them to bring up, bring out the can and add an effect, extra five dollars a month to the, the pickup and disposal of that. Right now, we're doing ten dollars. We provide one can to every resident. So, but some residents want more. I, I mean, I thought this, I think it's a, quite a bit. But if they may have a lot of people in the home and they wanna, we've gotten some calls about receiving extra cans. So this is what that is. And just wanted to have that discussion and get approval from you guys to do that. We will have to set up some additional billing. It'll come on the utility bill, just like we have it now. We'll have to set up additional code. It's just stuff in the system that they have to work out. But before we started, I just wanted to get approval from you guys and on all of it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've thought about that and I really wasn't in favor of them, but I think they work well. But I think that I've been convinced that some people need more than one. And I think that fee is appropriate. But I think as long as it's a single-family residence, not a rental, not a duplex, I think that we shouldn't charge the additional five dollars because we're already there. And that's my thoughts on that, on what y'all have proposed.
So you're saying just charge the extra for the extra can or what?
Yeah, charging for the can. I think that's fair because not everybody needs another can. But for an additional five dollars a month to pick it up, I don't think that would be fair since we're already there. If it gets out of hand, come back and let's talk about it. But I think that would be fair since we've surprised them and put these out there. And I think they like them. But that's my thoughts on it.
Any other?
I'm, I'm, I'm with Mr. Crawford in regards to that, the five extra dollars. I think twenty-five it should be enough. Since we're already there, you know, you pick it up one, you Since we're already there, you know, you're picking up one, you, all you're doing is moving an inch and picking up another and you're probably less than an inch, be honest with you. I just think it should be just twenty-five and that's it myself too. But that's me, thank you.
Any other?
I think that would be fair.
Sound reason.
Twenty-five dollar fee for another.
Okay. Yes, uh-huh, if there's no, no more discussion on it, I'll just talk to, we'll talk to it and just start that process and we'll, we'll, we'll go from there and see how that, that works. Yeah, no, we will, we'll put that, need that in motion.
Well, I make, I make that motion that we just charged twenty-five dollars.
I have a motion on the second, all in favor, if you would cash your votes. Our motion, Kirk. We'll start that, if you guys, we may just try to do that, I have to get with Angela and Cliff on the billing cycle to figure out how we need to do all that. But we'll, once we get it all cleared up, we'll put it on our social media and put it on the newspaper that's available. All right. Anybody on the community development? My community development is, we have a beer board meeting, let's do the slum, do the beer board meeting first and then we'll do the slum here, if that's okay. We don't have a slum, okay, I'm sorry, we don't have a slum here, me, so we just have a beer board meeting, yes, sir.
I have another question. This goes back to.
We don't have a slum here?
No.
Cheap price.
I didn't think so.
Have we, have you finished your survey on the time of the day? You know, we talked about it, what, two months ago?
Anything else? We done motion, we adjourned?
So moved.
Motion's second.
Stick.
Cash your votes and stand up.
Cash, we can't leave, you vote.
I was going to stand up.